All right, it's seven o'clock. Since Nancy's not here, I'm filling in for her leading the meeting. We're gonna call it to order. Paula, is this your roll call time?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, all right. Here we go.
Eric.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Ross.
Yes.
Sarah.
Here.
Jay.
Yes.
Okay. First up, we have upcoming legislation and agenda items, ordinance 2024-03, the ordinance to rezone the 110 acres within the village of Commercial Point to plan unit the P U D in adopting the preliminary plan of development. It'll be our third reading. Does anybody have any questions or comments, discussion on that?
Did we get everything updated? Do we have copies of everything?
That was my question. Yeah. We got a red line that Sarah and Alan and I went through. Oh, there was not much to correct. We did have some corrections. Alan, did you make copies of the?
No. If you'd like, I can get some of those made real quick.
No, I'll just, I'll run through them so you all are comfortable enough. There's a couple verbiage things, adding Eastland Joint Vocational School District, changing city to village, all really nondescript items. They did send us back a strike of what we had requested as to the bond. It'll simply be a TIF to pay them back. There will not be a bond. There will not be a cooperation agreement. There will not be anyone other than us overseeing the TIF funds and paying them out, which is exactly what you requested. There were some renumbering based on what they had stricken. We are going to set the ceiling at $2,079,000, as you guys requested. They had agreed to that.
What about the stipulation of increase? Is that ironed out about the percentage or what? They can come back for increase for pricing increases and stuff?
There'll be, there'll be no increases.
Okay, so if it costs them more, it doesn't matter?
It costs them more, it doesn't matter.
And that, will that mean that they have to fund the upgrades that have to be done over and above $2,079,000?
Yes, sir. For the off-site.
Yeah, yeah. Because I mean, and we still don't know what they're planning on doing to Durant or McCord, right? We've never, I don't recall ever getting anything.
Durant and McCord will have to be engineer based on the traffic study that ODOT does. We would anticipate a turn lane, but it'll be dictated by.
Well, is that the traffic study we had gotten where it said there needed to be a turn lane, whether it happened or not?
We haven't, we haven't gotten, I don't believe we've received a traffic study from Addison Farms.
I thought we got one.
We did last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it.
Very difficult to understand.
It mentioned that it has to have a turn lane, whether it happens or not. There would have to be a turn lane.
Yeah.
What we're gonna put, just so everyone's comfortable, we're gonna put on the public infrastructure improvements, which are those outside.
Right.
Yeah. It's gonna say all necessary improvements to Durant, McCord Road, and any other roadways required by the traffic study. So they will be responsible for anything that the traffic study requires for any public roads leaving into or out of the site. As I mentioned, we're gonna limit this to $2,079.
Or $2 million.
$2 million, or $2 million. We're gonna, we're gonna correct a couple things on the points that Ross asked, which was, are these your only changes which was Exhibit B to the Addison Farms Development Standards text? We've gone through it with your engineer, Susan. We've gone through it with John. And there are certain changes that they have requested, which we will put in a red line, which will comply with what we believe we need. And as Alan pointed out two or three meetings ago with the modifications or variations that you gave to prior developers, we're gonna change some of the roadways and the radius on turns for public service vehicles, as you all wanted. Susan and John believed that they were essential. The rear setbacks, the side setbacks, they're going to be in keeping with prior developments in the area. As you know, there's no Sub Area C, that's been taken out. They had requested a deviation of not more than 5%. Do not require engineering approval. We're going to strike that provision based on conversations that I had with Alan, Susan, and Sarah, and John. You will see Exhibit A to the standard text, which we will have a couple of edits to that Susan was kind enough to go through. You all should have received a new preliminary plan at the last meeting, which is in fact readable. I'd ask that you just read that and be comfortable with it and any questions you may have for the next meeting. Some of the footnotes on the preliminary plan are different than the text in the Attachment A. We're going to marry those up so that they all meet the requirements that Sarah and Alan and Susan and John and I went through. But you will be able to read these plans and see exactly, I know we had trouble reading the plans last time, but you should be able to read these preliminary plans. And if you have any questions, by all means, ask me. My plan is to, unless you have other items that you want to address, is to send them a red line of what we've discussed here tonight, what Susan and John have gone through from an engineering standpoint, and what Alan and Sarah and I went through in representation of the village. We're gonna make the face of the curves just a little bit wider than they had asked for. As I mentioned, the turning radius will be a little bit larger, as per John. And then Susan's final points. We're gonna have a 32-foot face-to-face on the curves on the main streets. We're gonna increase to 28 face-to-face on the other streets. They had 27. But to address that, we're gonna make that a little bit larger. They had requested 100 feet on the turning radius. And Susan put in the minimum that would be acceptable in her mind. With that, I think you've gotten everything you asked for from the developer, and your engineer has reviewed this, and John as administrator has reviewed it. And there's really nothing more to change unless anyone has a pet peeve on the final version that they had sent. But you got everything you wanted.
So at 32 feet, that's not gonna be a problem with parking on one side.
We won't have an other walk.
That, that matches, that matches, and that's what John and Susan caught. That matches everything we currently have inside of crossing.
Okay.
So that, that pulls it all together, which is what we need.
We wanted to put no parking signs and all that on one side, and it, but still be able to get through?
I thought the no parking signs was a whole ordinance for the entire village.
Yeah, it will be no parking on one side. Just like, because that was, I believe, what the ordinance was if the council passed. So it'll be like all the other developments. But yeah, that was just a concern, was the street width was the biggest thing that Susan and John picked up on. So this is, this is matching far as the build-out, the streets and everything like side of crossing. The TIF plan is pretty much identical to MI Homes' TIF, with the exception, this was 2 million capped at 2,079,000. MI Homes was capped at 2 million. They had originally asked for a discount on tax, as I recall, because of buying so many, and they were told no, and they said fine. And they also, as he said with the, there won't, no bonding or anything else, no interest being paid. They'll get the original TIF money that comes in after administrative cost until they reach their cap, and that'll be it.
So it is 0%?
0% interest. So this is basically the same TIF deal as MI Homes.
Everybody else.
And everybody, yeah. So that's in the development far, like you said, the, it lines up the streets and everything with existing development there side of crossing.
What was your total number of doors?
It says it on that map, 3 something.
374 and 3 something?
Yeah, something like that.
I'm wondering if them having to get the funding is gonna delay the inside stuff?
I, that's, that's all on him. I don't see that as a problem because nobody else goes out and gets outside funding.
178 and 168.
Thank you.
178 single-family homes and 168 one-story patio homes.
So basically, they're giving us everything that was asked for by this council?
The only thing in the air is not knowing who the builder was.
And that's, yeah, since he is not the builder himself, unlike having MI come in or DR Horton or Rodford. But that's, you know.
I mean, it'd be something new that we haven't dealt with in the past. Not knowing the low quality, you know, if you have multiple builders, are you gonna have houses that look ridiculous beside each other or?
There's certain, I mean, certain things in our zoning code are gonna have to be.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a place you, you can't have duplicate homes more than three doors down for. I mean, there, there are certain things, different faces, the different, you know, appeal and.
And that's in the PRD also?
I'm sorry.
That's in the PRD section?
Yeah, well, it's in our zoning code, and unless they try to accept, accept.
So if it's not on that list, then they have to.
If it's not on that list, they must, they must adhere to that.
That part of it is pretty well.
Yeah, that's pretty much cut and dried then. So I would, you know, when we get ready, whether you're in favor of this, not in favor of it, or whatever, I would just remind all of you that the, you know, take your personal feelings. If you've got personal feelings about the developer or anything else, try to ignore those and just, you know, then when you vote, you vote. We did have three council members vote to put residential there. If this is turned down and residential does come here, that's gonna be what we're gonna ask anybody else to do. I mean, it's, that, I don't know of anything else we would ask another developer to put there.
Done a great job negotiating. You've gotten everything you asked for, and we just, the three of us finally tuned it, and then I asked the engineer and the village administrator to weigh in. And we've gotten all the comments, get them back a red line. I'll make sure Alan gets the red line out to you so that you've got it before the meeting, but you've gotten everything you've asked for. Good job.
Ross, maybe you know the answer to this. The, having lived up that way, the lady that came in that has the kennels.
Yes, Caroline Kennel.
So I looked again, yeah, it used to be Smith's back there. And where they have that creek on their map is incorrect. It is not where it actually is. So I'm wondering, do we have due diligence to make sure that that's?
There's an obligation, there's an obligation when you start moving dirt and you start to, there's an obligation to protect the soils and adjoining properties. There are certain obligations that are inherent in the engineering process.
And I actually asked this question when we were going through this because I was really concerned about that, and I wanted to make sure that if we could make sure that that was covered in the development agreement.
Thank you.
That's, I know what Ross was saying, it's kind of.
This would be better for her than where she is now position-wise. Because I mean, the property is the way it was, it's been like that for a long time. So if she talks to the builder, then probably help her out. She's being, she's being flooded now, and they haven't, they haven't turned the shovel.
Right.
So anything he does would probably be.
I'm surprised when she's, I got this problem.
Yeah, she's already said she's got a problem. Well, that's.
Why didn't know if it would be a problem because it shows the creek long on there.
It does. I went and walked her property. I actually took the time and I went out and walked it, and I saw all of the issues that she has. And she was correct. She literally lives in a bowl. She gets the majority of the flooding from that field, and then the other ones from there. The other concern that she had that I'm hoping maybe this would fix is the road issue because up near her mailbox, which is right by the road, there is a big, she calls it a blowhole. It's where a bunch of water just comes splashing up. She talked to, well, she talked to Pickaway County, the township, I guess. And they said that they didn't have some of the stuff on their map, and so they couldn't fix it. So if that road gets updated, that would fix her problem too, wouldn't it? Would that road be getting fixed?
Yeah, and that's, you know, we're, we're going down the route quite a bit here on, on guest. But, you know, my, my overall statement, there're gonna be a lot of things that will be corrected. You know, if this is done the way that we believe it will be done, there'll be a lot of issues like that. But that, when you have that blowhole stuff, that means something downstream of there is plugged up. The water up here has no place to go, so it's shooting up.
They've redone, I, I went and looked, they redid a whole bunch of pipe on their own. Like it, it was huge piping that they've done and dug, and it's just, it feels like it's like one of those sink areas almost, and it keeps caving in. So you said that it would most likely, you guys covered that in your?
Well, it's, I wanted to make sure that she was covered. I did mention that. And so the response that I got was when they move dirt, when they do that, that it will help the problem, it won't make it worse.
All right. Just wanna make sure that she's covered because it's, it's bad out there.
I was concerned about her too, yeah.
Yeah.
And is that our engineers to make sure that that happens properly?
We have a vested interest in that. Our inspector will make sure that it's done according to our engineers' plan.
Okay.
Okay.
So making it better than it was, that's.
Because, because when this is all over and done, they're gonna hand, they're gonna turn around and hand this to the village. We're gonna own this from now on. So, you know, the due diligence is that this is gonna be inspected, and it's gonna be done correctly.
The other thing that I had when I walked out there is looking at her property against where the development would be. I don't remember. Do, did they have some kind of a barrier or something that was gonna go up to give her a little bit of delineation between that giant development and her land?
I think there was a mound or a swell.
I don't, I don't.
Where is, where is she at? Is she to the west?
Clear, they were on McCord.
She's on the south, south.
On the west?
I'm not northeast-southwest.
But it's, which way from McDonald's?
Listen here, Lewis and Mark, I don't know that stuff. Huh? What's her name? Um. Oh, heck. Shoot, I don't, Gigi was what I remember her thing.
Dog kennels?
Yeah, the dog kennels.
Missfords.
I remember.
If she talks about it, they probably.
That's what I'm hoping.
And it's not.
Thank you, Carney. Yes, the Carneys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Get one of my screens.
There's, there's landscaping on the north. There's a walk path on the south. There's green space all around nicely, a buffer.
You got to do the right, so the creek, actually, it runs down that direction.
It's kinda weird because it does this.
Retention basin built at the entrance.
So there's no like property that goes up against hers? There is a buffer. Because not just.
I'm not sure exactly where she's at.
Thanks, Sarah.
Richard Carney?
Yeah, yeah, Carneys.
They're Carneys?
No.
So she's right here. That's Robert Cheryl Smith. Yeah, she'd be, there'd be a walk path behind the mail kiosk.
That's the previous owner.
Well, they live in front.
Yeah, they do.
I don't know what, north, but that's okay.
Somewhere gonna be on one side.
Yeah, there's like a little green, a little green space, and on the other side of that green space on the far side is the mailboxes. But there's a green walking path between her property and the buildings.
I was gonna say, we probably have an easement anyways on the back side.
All right.
Now, we have, the only easement we have would be on McCord.
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing, is for the road, the easement thing, if they're gonna widen it, are they gonna widen it on her side of the road or the farmer across the street side?
We don't know if it's even gonna be widened. It's still up to the traffic study. I would guess it would be widened, but you're making assumptions.
Okay.
I wasn't sure how.
Roadwork is done per the traffic study.
All right.
So I wouldn't care to speculate.
If ODOT says they do have to widen it, then it's a, is that the developer or is that ODOT?
Well, it's not, ODOT's not, won't be involved because these are county roads.
This would be.
But there's, I think both, I think, I think McCord is a 45-foot right-of-way. So there's.
Yeah, I think that's what Moore Road was, and it was a county road, so there's room on each side.
There's enough room there to make it, whichever way it goes, that's, that's already in common.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
I'm good, I appreciate you guys looking out for her. That was my main concern.
Yeah.
She's a big property next to it, that's why.
One is her, it's her living, so it's important.
Okay, cool. If we are done with that, next up, we have Resolution 11-2025, the resolution to increase the sewer fund appropriations with the permanent budget.
And the administrative action.
What this is, is the, it's for our sewer fund that we have for a new plant that's going in. We thought at the time that we got the budget numbers that it was going to be completed by the end of 2024, and it is not. So this is the balance that I have to show as us receiving and expensing for our loan through OWDA. So I just have to be able to record it in our system.
Do we need to skip the readings on that one?
It's, I don't think there is.
This will be pending administrative action, so there won't be any.
All right, just making sure. Oh, yeah, Resolution, okay. Cool, all right. Next up on the list of things to do tonight is a presentation by DR Horton. Do I just call them in out there?
That's, this is upcoming legislation. They will be, they will be at the next.
You'll have it.
All right.
And I, I did send, I did send everyone out, I've sent you the original one that they gave us.
Where is this at?
This is on 104.
It'll be right next to where they went with the gas station.
Right across from the number two warehouse.
Put it up against Foxfire. If you look at the, the homes right there at the top of the picture, that's Foxfire. That's MI Homes. This is their stuff. And then down at the bottom is where they was, the gentleman's in here going through his annexation for the gas station. They, I sent everyone an email with an updated plan, site plan, and also it had three site elevations. So they'll coming in, we met with Jack Matino. Jack is with DR Horton. They, Jack's been here since it was, what, Westport?
He was a punk.
They, they basically, dealing with Jack Matino's been very good to work with. They built Chestnut Commons, Chestnut Estates, side of Crossing, and now they're coming in wanting to do something like this here. So it's, the biggest thing you might wanna watch is where you get to the density.
One of these.
Six, right, this is nine.
Yep. So that, you know, he's gonna be coming in, so have your questions ready for him. And I, like I said, I sent you the stuff I sent you the day I got today, so I sent it right back out to you. I want everyone to have a copy of it.
Yeah.
So check it out, have your questions ready to go.
Good, that's good. A lot of things you need to look at, pretty good.
Awesome. All right, there will be a variance request for 233 Victoria Drive. That was sent out, and we also have the little pictures. I have it in our mailbox thing.
And if you wanna touch on that one, the Bob?
Bob.
Bob, oh. Bob was prosecuted by myself and one of my associates. Found guilty of numerous zoning violations, including but not limited to building over the allowable side setback, building without an engineer's approval, installing without an engineer's approval, installing a patio over the line of where it could be.
No permit.
And doing all of his work without a permit.
It is on this property here, right?
Yes, yes. He was found guilty, he was ordered to pay fines and/or costs and our surveyor's costs. He has paid all of those. It's up to you whether to grant a variance in basically going back three years now. He has been found to have violated your code with what he has put in. Remedy should be to take out the offending structures, but I will leave that to you. Defending structures would be all in the patios.
The pa, the patio on the side of the house is within six inches of the property line. The setback is 10 feet, 5 feet, 5 feet, and he's six inches off the property line. There will be a public hearing.
6:30?
6:30. This come, or right before our next meeting, there'll be a public hearing for this because we have to do that for all variance requests. So there will be a public hearing. There is no legislation required for a variance request, so there'll be a public hearing, and then council has to make a decision within 35 days. So you, after the public hearing, we start to regular meeting, you can vote on it that night, or you can wait till the next meeting and act on it.
Do we definitely have a meeting within the 35 days, or do we?
We do.
We don't have anything coming up that would make it?
Yep, it'll fit, so.
So this letter, so all of his, these are signed by all his neighbors?
That's what he submitted, and he submitted me the application. The only thing that's missing with this whole application is the proper legal description. I still do not have that.
Okay, and so when he was prosecuted, did any of his neighbors?
Well, this went to the court. Yes, his neighbors, they, they were neighbors that complained, the neighbor to the, no one appeared in court to complain, but the neighbor to the.
North, was it?
Whatever is next door to him that he violated.
Yeah, the east, I think.
Curiously absent from it.
My question, you know, always on, on these things is, how does this impact runoff? What are we doing with surface water?
And we had photographs that your zoning administrator testified to, which showed an erosion, not only of the wall, the retaining wall that he put up, which was another violation, but the runoff was causing all of the.
To the white house?
Topsoil to go, yes, sir.
Okay.
The soil to go?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you could see it.
Yeah, just making sure.
Yeah. And if, if the variance is not approved, you have to take out the offending structure and start over. That's kinda where we're at. The, he has not complied with our requirements for him to submit a proper legal description of the property. I do have a survey that I can bring down at the next meeting. I'll can look at it to prove what the judge has already said and what Alan mentioned, which is, he's right up on the property line, and he did it without a permit.
No, correct me if I'm wrong. If, if he doesn't give us everything required by the property, by the packet, then how can we really act on it because it's incomplete? Yeah, I mean, it's incomplete, so at that point, it's not even.
But if he submits the property description by the public hearing?
That's the easiest thing.
Well, we've been sitting on this in the office for how long?
Several months, with emails going back and forth. I even sent a sample of a proper legal description.
Yeah, you can get it off a SIS.
So, yeah, we've been waiting, and it's just, we need to do something with it. So it's like, okay, we don't have the property description. It's a legal piece of paper, we can read it, we know where it's at, we know what the problem is. Put it in front of council, make a decision, what are we gonna do?
And understand that he's already been found guilty of zoning violations. One of the requirements was that he file a variance application as part of his probation. It doesn't mean that you're gonna vote on it.
I guess it didn't, it didn't say he had to file a complete and accurate variance application.
Yeah, we contacted the probation department. She basically told us that she wasn't gonna violate him for submitting an improper application, but you can vote on the application that he sent in. Uh, but you can vote on the application that he sent in, and you can see it was received August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. We're six months later, we still don't have all the required, so you can deny it, and he can be forced to that in this situation.
We don't have a timeframe on this, by, by our rules?
Nope.
Not until the public hearing.
Once the public hearing, you got thirty-five days to make a decision.
And a no action is a no, if it would come to that.
No action's no action, I would ask you.
Okay, I just was, make it short.
And by all means, if you wanna go view the property, go view the property.
I would highly suggest all of you take a drive-by and take a look at it.
It's at White House number two thirty-five, zero, is that your address?
Two thirty-three is what's on the property.
That's their address, yeah, I'm talking about the White House next.
Oh, the White House, I'm sorry.
They're approaching the pub.
Yeah.
Should be fine, yeah.
Yeah, cause that's the only one missing out here.
Yeah.
And they're by twos on that street. I guess it, it Go with it, they would tell the people, don't follow the rules, you can get away with it later, but I mean, we make the rules, I think we gotta stay informed.
Once again, I'll just reiterate, he was convicted on four counts of zoning violations, uh, because he was accused to run the situation. And he continued it two or three times, and he had two or three attorneys.
This is the one you updated this on the beginning of the year, the successful?
Well, I updated you.
Yeah, several times.
After the trial, after the verdict, after he paid. It's the same zoning violation.
Okay.
Alright, moving on, uh, there would be a conditional use request for the Harsh Alley, if we have anything on that.
No, this is to go to the daycare, right?
Correct. I did see the, uh, the Harsh Alley, just making it continue to go one way. At five thirty-six in the morning, I think that'd be a lot of traffic going down that little tiny alley.
And if I could say something, I was following a woman in the other day, and she was trying, she, she wanted to turn down that street, and then she realized it was one way. And so she pulled up and pulled in the gas station, and I have a feeling that's gonna happen in a lot, until, at least until they learn where they're really going. You know, like, I don't know.
Which is gonna be tough.
Yeah, cause it's not white kids and made it two-way, and then the other thing about daycares is they have buses that go in and out of there.
Yes.
So you're gonna have those little buses going down those other little streets if they don't fix, um, you know, the in and out.
Yeah, and we already had the post office having an issue with the width of that anyway.
Well, that, yeah, that, that's what commited in the one-way.
Right.
You know, at the, that's where I'm on Third Street.
Yeah, which, yes.
Yeah, I think you almost have to do something with this street.
Well, when's the public hearing on this one?
Next Monday or
Next council.
Next council meeting.
So we just have that.
It'll be at six forty-five, will be the public hearing for that, and once that public hearing is over, you have thirty-five days to make a decision. And no legislation's required on that one either, both of these are just motions only.
Conditional use.
Conditional use, so the conditional, you're gonna be looking at Bob, and I apologize, I, I don't know, I can't remember Bob's last name. You're gonna be looking at his variance request, you'll have thirty-five days.
Yeah.
And then you'll have the conditional use, you'll have thirty-five days to make a decision, so you can either make the decision that night, or you'll have to make a decision and vote on it at the following meeting. I have one other thing to add on there that I just found out today, so it was like an item G. It's upcoming, I just wanted to let you know.
We haven't got to F yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, let's, let's get G out of the way real quick. G, G's an easy one, G's an easy one. And it's a cer- it's a service resolution for the Strutman property, they came in and did their presentation. I talked to, uh, Tom Hart today, and he's gonna submit his application to annex with the county commissioners. And he's gonna do that before the twenty-fifth of this month, so a service resolution will be on your agenda. And that's one of them where we have to respond within twenty days, so we need to readings waived on that.
And what we just did for the other two.
What we did for the other two, it's required with every annexation, so that's, just wanted to get that one out of there.
Alright.
Simple, easy.
Deal be easy, waive it, move on, alright, cool. Back up to F now, uh, street closure request, center of town, I think we saw that in our email. Um, it's for, I guess.
Every, every Thursday in July?
Yeah, every Thursday in July, um, so you guys got that information, did anybody have anything?
They, they, Mallory is one of the new owners of Beck's Garage, Mallory and her daughter are both owners. They both requested a meeting, we met, the chief and I met with them last week. They came in, they was, um, basically saying this is what's coming up, they wanted our input on this. They have done a agree, an agreement with, um, Q F M ninety-six is gonna be coming down for four Thursday nights in a row in July. And they're doing their, basically motorcycle shows what they're wanting to try to have. Uh, the DJ personalities will be there, they'll be doing the blow-up thing where you're jumping around grabbing cash. And some of that kinda stuff, as well as a concert from six to nine.
It's gonna bring a lot of people in the community, cause they did it up at Quaker State and I've done a couple other ones.
So is it all four or none? Is that how it was filled out? If we say no to?
No, we have no say in whether they're having it, they are having it.
But if they can't close the streets, they can't.
They can still have it, you're gonna have motorcycles parked, that's where the chief and I made the
Yeah.
Made the recommendation, you need to close, fill out the permit, do a street closure, because they're having it, whether we close it or, we can't stop it, they've got a place to do their concert, they got parking on the streets.
Well, if they're doing it no matter what, I think it's safer to have the streets.
I think, and that was what the chief and I said, if we close the streets, and then we can also, you know, you close the streets, we have an extra officer milling around or something or other, what they really wanted to do was turn this into like a family event. And they was offering to even put the concert in the center of town versus back behind the bar.
Well, that, that's, and that's what I would prefer, because if it is something of this scale, and what it can be, there's no sense of trying to cram it into that patio space in the back, and then have the same people have the same problems that we've had before, but have, let's have it right out in front.
Well, their, their only problem with that was, obviously they're a bar and they can't sell alcohol out in the street.
Well, that was my next question.
That was, that was why they didn't wanna move the
Yeah.
The band to the street, they was wanting to, they actually was asking, they was asking me, and I said, I didn't know, they wanna know if I thought the ladies auxiliary would come and do chicken noodles, they would like to have it like a community event for four Thursday nights in a row is what they're trying to do, and they said if the ladies auxiliary didn't wanna do it, and they got permission to close the streets, and maybe they could bring in a couple food trucks. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's six to nine is what they're looking at, if we don't close the streets, then obviously there can't be food trucks out there. And it'll, but it's, it's gonna happen, I mean, that's already, they did this, uh, Q F M ninety-six did their bike nights or whatever up at the old Betts Fortress, year, year before last, and they ran them there all summer long, every week. Then I guess last year, they started, they went up to, was it Quaker State, or they was, they was up in the north end of Columbus. Well, this year, they're taking it on their world tour, and they're bouncing around, they're going to this, this place for a month, this place for a month. Well, commercial point's been picked for, uh, for, uh, the month of July.
Is there any way that we can ensure that there's a police officer in that area? I mean, with that many people.
They will have to be.
Yeah, but we can't assign one there technically, I mean, how's that gonna work?
No, what, what will happen is if the streets are closed and we're doing something like this, I will without a doubt have the chief have an officer down there.
Okay.
Probably just walking around, just like a homecoming. Because of, because of the crowd, and then the two or three officers.
I wonder if the sheriff's office would let us borrow some auxiliary dance for something like that, if it's a community thing.
Cause crowds they have, if it's got four or three hundred people, you're gonna need one, one or two officers.
Hmm, we did the old go-karts and you had four officers.
Well, that was spread out.
But.
Especially for the first one, till we get a game.
But I, I think, I think we're gonna wind up seeing, you know, it's, it's, they're, anyway, it's what's gonna, this is gonna be in front of you at the next meeting to make a decision, it's a street closure request. That is the game plan that they would like to go with, though, try to make it as much of a community event as possible.
Did you have something you were gonna say, Sarah?
Oh, just that, no, no.
I thought I saw, I was like, oh, wait, I wanna make sure.
No, I was just gonna say for, for the people who live around this area.
Exactly.
July, middle of summer on a Thursday, I know that there are already noise complaints from last year, but I think nine o'clock is a good cutoff time, but will it, will they, will they be hanging out? Later than that, you know what I mean?
The music, so the, the concert's done at nine, but they're still gonna have, you know, jukebox and all that. Usually by about midnight, everybody's completely gone.
I, I don't see these events lasting, I mean, you got your radio personalities are gonna be there, all their stuff's gonna be packed up and out of there at nine o'clock.
Probably done mostly by ten.
I'm just concerned like you about the noise complaints we got last year, just probably get some, but we just need to be prepared for that.
Conditional, could you make this as part of the, uh, put them on the, make the band move to where we want them, can we suggest that?
We can, and then, uh, if they decide, okay, that's not gonna work for us, no, we'll just do our event, can your streets open?
Can they get any kind of license to serve out?
Yeah, they can do up to three a year.
But they, a bar is not eligible to get that, like, the men's club, the men's club can get it, but if you have a bar with your own license, you cannot.
The only way they can get in is if we adopted that.
Like a district.
Yeah, if we adopted a, a walk and drink or a Cobra district. Yeah.
We need a Dora district for the triangle.
For hell's sake.
To be, to be quite honest, it used to be you couldn't get a Dora unless it was, you were a city.
Yeah.
That law has changed, and the chief actually, he, he sent me some information, and I was gonna try, I haven't looked through it yet, but I don't know if we even wanna look at something like that, but I don't think it would hurt, just because, I mean, we, we're doing the car show down there, we do food trucks.
Exactly, and then people could just.
Mill around, but you've got the restricted area right there in the center of town. And, and if, and if that was the deal.
Honestly, we're growing and growing and growing.
The advantage to a Dora, I've looked at several, is that your bars can sell for people to walk outside.
Yeah.
They just have to have.
The clear cup, this is the word.
So it, it helps the brick and mortar more than the food truck coming in, the beer truck coming in.
Yeah, but it kinda softens the blow, if you had that, when we do food truck festivals, and you got food trucks down there, and the bars aren't selling any, any food.
How long does that type of, uh, request take to get into motion and stuff?
You just have to write the legislation.
You gotta write the legislation. Legislation has to be approved of, yeah, gets approval from, uh, the liquor, you know, board. Um, then you gotta get buy-in from a local establishment that wanna be part of the Dora.
I doubt we're gonna have any pushback.
Well, we, we have a total two, and I don't know if there's a requirement of how many you have to have within your district. I know when it was in a city, the old stuff used to be, had to have so many.
I know for a city, it's not, because there's, there's one in Columbus that literally has one bar, or two bars, and that's it, it's, uh, uh, it's right there on Town Street, it's literally just the two.
Well, if, if that's, if that's what they've gotten to, like I said, I know that they, the legislation, I think I saw from the municipal league, the complaint was the cities could do it, but in the villages were getting penalized.
I'll look into it, I'll look into the Dora and what the, see what things are, and we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Be nice to see that. I'll reach out.
It'd be some good information to have, just to.
Even if it's not for this time, so we can know in the future, does, does somebody make?
The bars can always apply for a special use permit.
I, I do that.
But if you men's level of the club, come on in.
Now, you kinda skirt around with that one.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, uh, I'm just gonna ask one more thing real quick on the street closure thing. Is there any way to make sure that all of the residents in that direct area know that this is going to happen?
They all know.
They all know?
It's a Thursday.
I'm just making sure that it catches no one by surprise.
I can go down my street, that takes care of like eighty-seven point seven percent of those people in there.
I'm just trying to cover all the bases, I'm making sure everybody knows that this is coming, alright.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a public hearing, if, if you want.
That zoning administrator sent a letter to all those, effectively, all those, that you wanna see that.
Cool, there isn't a public.
There isn't a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, wrong one.
But it'll be discussed at a public meeting.
Perfect, alright, just making sure, okay.
If you wanna give notice that you're having a public meeting to discuss the street closure for those four Thursdays, you can always.
I think that's already been out to people too.
Just making sure, like I said, alright, um, next thing.
Before you go to, can we skip again, it said, before you go to four, we, Bill suggested we do, we do four is the last thing for the night.
I, I love it, alright.
Additional business, I've got a couple things, one was brought up to me, do we want foul legislation in the village?
Yes, both, that was a quick one.
Yes, please.
Or, or is counsel, is counsel interested, I'll put it that way.
What is that entailing, and what are your strong feelings, Sarah?
My strong feelings are that we should have foul.
Then you can have it now.
We don't need legislation.
Yeah, we don't need legislation for that, because it's not, we don't have legislation saying you can't have it now.
Chickens, chickens, fowl and poultry are not banned at this time.
Now, I would make, I would like to make sure they are not ever banned.
I have, I, I.
Well, you can't, you can't rule forever.
Columbus, Columbus has a five limit, only his, uh, Hilliard has, uh, six. And you have to have a permit for them to come out and check that you have a coop that'll keep them enclosed, I mean, that's the. What's that?
The question came up, did you wanna ban them, we have an ordinance that bans just about every farm animal out there except for chickens.
Now, the thing is, you can't have them and sell your eggs or sell the chickens, because the ordinance covers that, you can't have a.
Hold on, Ross, I can't hear them, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my, my bad, my bad.
So, the ordinance doesn't allow you to commercially have any animal and sell it, or you can't sell your eggs, that would be in violation of the code we have now, the way it reads, because it's for a commercial kennel, commercial uh, animals, but you can have it for your own use, at least that's how I interpreted what we have on the books now. So if you want it for your own eggs, now you could give them away, you just can't have a sign that says eggs, four dollars a dozen, seventy-four dollars a dozen.
The, the issue, the issue really is, is not about, to me, it's not, it's, it's about, it's about the activity uh, of, and the activity that is, that goes along with it, being a poultry science major, and I, and, um.
And the reason you can't breathe.
Well, and, and, yeah, and, you know, you, you have, you have a, a certain smell that's associated with, with farm animals. Uh, and noises that they make, and fights that they have, and places that they go if they're free range, which nobody, I mean, how many people are gonna put up pens to do this thing, and what are their neighbors, I mean, you're, you're, and we had, and, and I, I looked for it. I couldn't find it.
Never, it never went to vote?
No, no, we had in the old ordinance, and we had an old ordinance, and the appendix are, like, six oh two, I keep having that number. But it gave a list of animals that were prohibited.
We still have that, but poultry wasn't on there.
But we should amend it for like small animals under a certain weight.
Somebody wanna bring horse ones.
Let's just be happy. In your new code.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the ordinance that I've seen for them are very specific, that they have to be contained in a run, they can't be free range. There's a maximum number, so I, I think if we're gonna allow it, I think we should have something on the books that puts those stipulations. And remember, HOAs can still say no. No, I think it came up, because I had somebody ask me if they were allowed to have chickens, and I said, I'll look into it, and I couldn't find anything, so I called Jim. And I said, I said, Jim, they asked me if we, I can't find anything, can you? And he looked and couldn't find it.
So my input is, until there is an issue or a problem.
Right.
I don't know why we have to discuss that.
I agree.
Well, I kinda go the other way with this thing, be proactive enough to say if it does come up, it's like, I don't know, we just recently dealt with that and decided that it wouldn't be in the village's best interest.
I disagree, respectfully.
No, that's fine, no, that's fine.
Save the chickens, Ross.
There is, there is something in the zoning code that says if there's a. There is, there is something in the zoning code that says if there's a noxious odor coming from the coop. So if your neighbor can stand in his property and smell it, then there's gonna be a zoning problem right away.
And that's also health department issue. It's not just our zoning.
Well, it's probably gonna be the health department that's gonna do anything about it, would be my guess.
Yeah, so i- if you want, I'll write the legislation. If we don't want it, I won't.
But I, I was asked by the zoning administrator if council wished to add that to the existing zoning.
No.
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 There you go. I won't worry about it.
All right, moving on. What else you got there, Mayor Sir?
Uh, while we're doing adding the zoning code stuff, we had someone request as far as our industrial outside storage. We had a, I don't know if it's, I don't know who it is. Some guy just sent an email and said, I didn't see anything about that in your zoning code. He was looking to, I evidently buy a piece of land or a lot, just stack a whole bunch of semi trucks on it or something.
I don't know. Wouldn't that be commercial?
Well, if you're, if you went out here and bought a commercial lot in the warehouse district and put down blacktop and parked trucks. We, I couldn't find anything in our zoning code that said that you could not store, and he was asking about storing.
If they, if they're not licensed and insured, you can't.
Storing trailers, tractor trailers.
Licensed and insured, we have a code for that. It's a junk or abandoned vehicle. And that's on commercial or residential property. We have that.
Okay, so they could sit there indefinitely though.
If they're properly tagged and they.
See where I'm going. I do, I do.
Yeah, I mean, so.
There is.
Right, we know that.
But we haven't been able to find anything in.
In commercial that says that you couldn't, and he wanted to know like, would it have to be hidden, landscaped around it? Would it have to be enclosed in a fence? There's nothing, there's nothing.
Wouldn't they have to tell us what they're gonna use the property for?
No, if someone, if, if someone wants to come up and buy a piece of property.
Yeah.
Right now, say you wanna go out and you buy a piece off of, out in warehouse district. You buy a lot, you go in, okay, I'm gonna put in a um, blacktop. Okay, there it is, or I'm not gonna put in anything. I'm just gonna pull a bunch of trailers back there and start parking them. What are you gonna do?
Even though we might not have it, it might be in their best interest to go ahead and put a fence up anyway. Like, we don't know if they will, but they might just because. They might not wanna draw attention to their stuff and, you know, having people over there. I like what I saw down at three sixteen and one oh four. They had a bunch of tray, trailers parked there and they fenced that whole corner. And that was nice.
But we have nothing, we have nothing requiring that.
So we need it.
But do you think we should?
And what they was asking was industrial, they called it iOS, industrial outside storage. So it wasn't necessarily just trailers.
Yeah, birds.
Could be a junkyard.
Yeah.
That, we do have.
Well, we got something said about the junkyard, I believe, yeah.
I kind of like the fencing idea.
But there's nothing in our code that says they have to do anything.
Extend it, it's right to code and prohibited.
Yeah, what, what, so we do, we would do industrial slash commercial then? So that way as we grow, it covers both?
I mean.
I mean, because somebody could put.
That, that comes to the man in the greens, in the green suit.
Uh, rail cars out there with stuff in it. And you need to fence out of rail cars and probably, I mean, for commercial fencing, I don't know if we don't allow that or not.
We don't allow, we don't allow containers.
Containers in the village to be used in the village.
Okay.
Kind of feels like we need something written up.
It was just one of them things where we got a question through an email and it's like, someone's thought of something and he goes, I can't find it in your book. Well, it's because it's not in there. If anyone's interested in pursuing this or moving forward, if council wants to move forward with this. Maybe our solicitor could look something up to figure out, come up with some idea or something.
Yeah.
I don't know how you approach it even.
See, I knew on, on South High Street there for, for many, for several months. They were having an overflow of like Amazon trailers and things and they had traffic backed up on. On South High Street at two seventy, they had traffic backed up, trying to just store the trailers, just get stuff moved in and out of there. Uh, but you know, as, as far as them being there, it didn't hurt anything because that area is so depressed anyway. Distressed that actually it didn't hurt anything, but, but I'm trying to imagine what it would be like.
Yeah.
I don't like.
I.
No, I don't care.
Do we wanna, wanna look into it?
Yes.
Is there interest in looking into this?
Yeah, I'm willing. That's one I think we need to be proactive.
Is, is Rod still over in, in Betts?
I think so.
Yes, yes. All right, do you have any other?
Sure I do.
Of course you do.
Easy enough. One of them, we got our new police cruiser.
I saw.
We got, and that takes the place of the one that got totaled. It'll probably be a couple of months before it's outfitted and ready to go on the street. With that being said, council appropriated money to go ahead and add an additional cruiser to the fleet. Or is everyone okay if I go ahead and place the order and get started on that?
Cars, because that might be six months.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking, well, actually, it's gonna be a couple of months before it's even built. So we're not even gonna be able to pick it up like this.
You think we could get that one in service before the end of the year?
Oh, I would hope to have it by the end of summer.
Well, we make it up one part now.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If we know we're buying it, we can give them the build date.
Well, if, if council's good, I just didn't wanna go out and buy the other cruiser, even though you appropriated money for it. I wanted to make sure everyone's on board with this.
Please, so we can get that twenty seventeen out of services before it needs repaired.
And the last thing I have, council approved the money, but this would have to come back to council for approval. Flock cameras, these cameras, it was one of the recording.
Absolutely, yes.
Those, you appropriated money, but it requires a subscription to them and I wanted to know if council wished to move forward with the camera situation.
Yes.
Subscription, do you remember offhand what?
The first year was like fifteen thousand and then the consecutive years were like twelve.
About twelve thousand a year? That's four, I believe he said four cameras.
Yeah, but it's two at one site and two at the other because they'll go opposite directions.
Yeah, I think.
And I, I believe Grove City has some of these.
Yes.
And the, um, if you have them, then they all communicate with each other or whatever and they, I.
Where are we?
What, the county has bought some of these too. They, the county, I think chief said one of them was up there at the county line on one oh four.
Yes.
So they've got one up there. So it's just like, and I've heard that Asheville and Bloomfield was gonna buy some, but I don't know now if they're still moving forward with that or not. So anyway, I just wanted to know, there's money appropriated in the budget, but.
Yeah.
We will be coming back if council wants to move forward with this, knowing the price.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll get the legislation put together to enter into the program, subscribe here, so John can sign the contract.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Wow.
Easy.
Right. Cool. Any other letters of the alphabet to go over before we do executive session? Awesome. Okay. Got anything? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we probably need to let the public know that after our executive session, we're just gonna come back to the meeting and adjourn the meeting. Everything else is over with. So if people watching tonight don't wanna continue to watch or sit out in the chambers. Once the public executive session's over, we're just gonna come back and adjourn the meeting.
What he said. Hope you guys heard that. Okay.
And I'll wait till you, till it's voted on to move into it.
All right, so executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code, section one twenty one dot twenty two. Uh, section G subsection three, to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Do we have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
Okay, that was by Eric. Do we have a second?
Second.
That is by Jay. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. All right, so roll call. Jay?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yep.
Okay, I am going to mute the microphone and turn the camera.
Perfect.